Everybody's all ready, set to go? Hello?
I can hear you.
Wait a minute, I don't see Matt. Oh, there he is.
Is Julie here?
Wait, where is she?
She's not.
All right, we're not in line with her, not on video.
Hey Creed, can you hear us?
Yeah.
Yeah, man.
I can hear you, this is Mike Brown.
Yeah.
Okay, all right then, everybody's here.
Is Julie?
Matt's on there.
Matt's here.
I don't see Julie.
Julie's not here.
Do you have a phone number?
Okay, do you need any assistance?
Yes, go to the website.
To go to the Estelle Manor website, and there's a link at the bottom of the homepage. The Estelle Manor website, there's a link to the website. Does she run the city park?
No, she goes to the bottom of the homepage.
Bottom of our homepage is where it's likely to be found.
Yep. Yeah, is it? Is she under the name of James Cassis?
What?
Yes.
What's her name again?
James Cassis.
No, that's not her.
That's not her? Where the heck is she? Some guy named James Cassis. Do you see her? Julie, are you on? Ms. Sparks? This is a 10x, what's on 11?
11.
I think that was from the break.
So what happens if she's not able to join the stream?
Oh, she can come over here if she likes. Oh, wait, she's here, hold on.
Julie, are you able to hear us?
There she is. Yeah, there she is.
She's there. She's here, we can start, right?
Yes, we can. Ms. Sparks, you need to unmute your microphone. If you want to talk.
On the top right, Julie, on the top right, if you tap on that, it'll come up and you can hit unmute. Just, just.
There you go.
I got bottom left.
Oh, okay.
Just wanted to make sure we could hear you.
I pushed it, but then it said the host wants you to stay unmuted, or I'm going to want you to stay muted. So I said, all right, stay muted.
Okay.
... of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Dilch?
Here.
Mr. Olson?
Here.
Ms. Owen?
Here.
Sparks?
Here.
Or Vanessa?
At this time, I need a motion to open a meeting to the public, in which the first will have three minutes to speak, and it would simply be about agenda items going. I'll make the necessary motion, is there a second?
Mayor, you need to keep your voice up, the public is having a hard time hearing you.
Okay. At this time, the meeting is now open to the public, anybody who has any questions pertaining to the agenda, now's the time to ask. I don't. We put him, boy to water pipe, and I'm hoping that we're getting close to the session.
So shall I wait to, you'll just have to tell me when it's my turn now.
It's your turn now, you have the floor.
Okay, thanks, well, I'm very impressed with Mr. DeLucre, from the law firm. He's gone through about two-thirds of the codes, and he sent me a list, an email list, of the things that he found. And I felt like I was waiting for the results of a final exam, and I was thrilled that he, a lot of them, he edited just for form, that I might boost them up a bit, which is going to make it go much quicker through the general code process that they have to do. Because they'll be in good shape when they get there, and that's because he's doing all the work now. And he had a few questions, and I sent him my historical records for the things that he needed information about. For example, one little thing was when we took away the license for yard sales, I forgot to take license out of the title of the section. So, you know, he's catching all that, and I'm just really impressed. So all you need to do, it looks like, is just decide what color you want the binder, and if you have a seal that goes with it. And then he will present the final document to you, you know, when it's all ready to go to general code, as I understand it. I hope I got that right, but it's moving along, and I'm really pleased.
I may say this to, two points of your question you just asked. On our wall, we have a logo, and historically, green has always been the city's color, so we will remain green. If there's any way that you want to, if you need a copy of our logo, maybe we'll have to take a picture of it, mail it over to you, Mrs. Cassigram. That's a start, I'm not aware if we actually in fact have a logo that is sitting in the clerk's office. But for the best of my knowledge, this is probably the next best thing, is to take a real clear picture of this city logo here on the wall.
To Mrs. Cassigram's question, Matt and I are aware of that, and he, him and I have discussed it. And he's going to go look for the seal for you, and we should have an answer for you hopefully by tomorrow, with everything you need.
Oh, that's wonderful.
Okay.
Thank you so much, yes, the committee at work, I appreciate it. Great.
I'll let Mr. DeLucre know of your compliments.
Well, thank you, they're certainly well deserved, because we learned to pronounce his name, and we're good, huh?
Thank you, Mrs. Cassigram.
Thank you again for all your help.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who has?
No one has mentioned it, Mr. Pope, would you, Mr. Pope?
Yes.
Thank you. I suppose that working on getting the agenda back up on the website will be a continuing situation, hopefully this is a one-time glitch with the transition, however that's going to go. But the other part goes to, actually to the code project. I would hope that strong consideration would be given to removing, well, removing, in essence, the removal of the forestry ordinance from the omnibus. I have not been able to find anything that has that as a recommendation from general code. It appeared to be something that was brought up by one member of the committee. It really only affects one person who seems to have a disproportionate difficulty with abiding by the minimal standards that the municipality has in place. That creates a conflict of interest, considering the position that that person has. Also, if you remove the minimal requirements, those of us with 10 acres or more of property may wind up giving due consideration to applying ourselves, because after all, we only have to set one hurdle. And then just have Mother Nature or someone else get rid of some trees, and we get a 90% tax reduction. Which I don't think is overall going to be healthy for the city's long-term financial health. So unless there's some other substantiation, documentation, or something else presented, as opposed to the other things that were recommended, truly recommended, for consideration by general code in their original report. I would ask that you give strong consideration at a minimum to taking the forestry piece out, and if it then winds up standing on its own merit at some future point, then so be it, otherwise, this winds up potentially tainting the whole project as a, well, a giveaway to one person who's in a position to have pushed for it. And I don't think that's overly helpful for anybody, thank you.
I would like to respond to that, if you don't mind. Well, I have great faith that Mr. DeLucre will find it, whether it's legal or not, because we did our best. And I disagree with everything Mr. Pope said, because I think that the attorney will determine whether it meets the law or not.
But I would like to, thank you, Mrs. Cassigram, what I'd like to do is not have a debate with two leaders, two residents going back and forth. There was a point, there was a point made, that's.
But you're just allowed that to happen.
Anyone else in the public?
I don't see anyone, Mr. Mayor, I don't see any additional comments. Nope.
All good?
All good.
If there's no one else, I'll make a motion to close the public portion.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're going to go down through the engineer's report, I know that Mr. Brown is with us, Michael?
Yes, good evening. This is my engineer's report. First item is regards to the City Hall improvements, last we spoke, there was a, not, an issue with the lighting that was installed. The wall-mounted light for the City Hall improvements was on a photocell, which means it's powered from dusk till dawn. And the light fixture out front is tied in and wired to the decorative lighting that is on a timer. I know it was a concern and an issue of maybe having the new pole-mounted light be on sync with the wall-mounted light. So I did check with the contractor, they installed the photocell, so you have the option to have that turned on from dawn till dusk. But in order for that to operate independently, they'd have to run a new wire, which would be covered by the grant. So just seeking some direction from council this evening, if they would wish to keep the current installed pole on the circuit of the decorative lights, where it would be synced and on the timer, or have the option to run it and have it act in sync with the wall-mounted light that was just installed over the handicapped entrance, where it would be lighting City Hall from dusk till dawn. We just wanted to open that up for discussion through the direction, it would be an extra, but it's covered under the grant.
I understand what you're saying. Is it really that much of a significant cost?
I really hear you very well.
Is it really, is it really that much of a significant cost for the?
I was given a ballpark today from the contractor, it's about a day's worth of work to run that. He estimated, you know, 1,500 to 2,000 to do that.
Versus shutting the light off after a certain time, which is generally.
Yeah, it would be in, be in sync with the current timing pattern that the decorative lighting, light fixtures on in the parking lot. So it would be in sync. And that's how it's currently set up right now.
And that setup is, shuts off at 11 o'clock or midnight, am I correct?
That's my understanding, yes.
How does council feel, should we keep lighting on all night long for the purposes of safety of the building? Just thinking of the side, side of the parking lot over here, versus?
If the lighting improves the ability of the cameras to capture images in an otherwise dark time, we should probably take advantage of that.
I would think so.
If cameras don't cover that area, then what's the difference?
I agree. So at this time, then, they're looking to keep the lighting on, and we're probably going to authorize them to approve the amendment. Or fix the panel, so that way they're hardwired in, and it'll be a permanent.
Okay, sounds good, I'll speak to the contractor tomorrow and get that addressed shortly, and then we'll process the closed-out documents and get that underway.
I'm going to make a motion.
Moving along.
Wait, hold on, Mr. Brown.
I'm making a motion at this time to authorize Brown and the engineering to hold the contractor for the city grant to make the changes, for the photocell lighting, is there a second?
I have one more, one more question, there's enough, there's enough money to cover the whole entire expense in that grant still?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there is.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Is there any other questions? Comments? If there are, if Mr. Moore could you keep the roll call?
Mr. Dilch?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Ms. Sparks?
Yes.
Or Vanessa?
Okay, moving on to Beach and 12th, the contractor returned the closed-out document to us just the other day. We'll get those signed on our end and over to City Hall, the final signature, and send that up to the state and close that project down. Fifth Avenue, we have the plans completed, I did forward a copy of the Pine Lands application and the fee for the filing with the Pine Lands. I just resent that over this afternoon, so as soon as that can be returned, we'll proceed with the first step and getting the roadway approved, and that's going through Pine Lands, and then, you know, we'll go from there.
Are you guys signed that already tonight?
Okay, great.
Or you can mail that out, or you can just mail it.
What would you like, Mike, you want to pick it up or mail it to you?
I would just mail it, because you have to send the check as well, for the application fee.
Mail it directly to Pine Lands or back to you?
To our office, we have the attached plans and the specifications and the other attachments, so we'll file it directly to Pine Lands.
We don't have that on the bill, is that true?
There was something last meeting for 250 to Pine Lands that was sent over, I thought.
I believe that's the application fee, I believe it's $250.
Okay, so that was sent last, at the last meeting.
Did that go directly to the Pine Lands or to our office?
Pine Lands.
Okay, I'll have to call them and straighten that out to that end. That was supposed to go with the application, but I'll try to track that down through their office.
Okay.
And then lastly, the application for Maple Avenue was submitted to DOT, and we're just awaiting an answer on whether the city received funding for the 2021 trust fund application.
Well, I don't know if this is good news or bad news, but I guess the good news is, we probably could stand a good chance to get it, because now that the state has decided to borrow nine and a half billion dollars to help cover some of the revenue loss through the COVID-19. There'll probably be some monies that will go in towards transport costs, I think we'll probably still have a chance. We'll keep our fingers crossed, Mike, do you have anything else?
That's all I have of my engineer's report.
I have a question for you, engineer. The solicitor's letter regarding the Pitt and Pearson's request seems consequential to me, how did you feel about it, Mr. Fraley?
I did take a look, are you referring to the email that was sent on Saturday?
Yes, and the reference to code, the reference seemed consequential, what did you think?
Well, the code does not specifically identify the 35 feet, the only section I saw in the code referred to a 15-foot depth in regards to the seasonal high water table, so without having the plan and the elevations in front of me, that may very well be where the 35 feet come from, but it didn't specifically state a depth of 35 feet as was outlined in the email.
Does it seem to you, or would you agree that in order for council to be sufficiently informed to make a decision like what we're contemplating, we need to know the implications of that?
Well, it's my understanding you're looking to make this ordinance change consistent with the Pine Lands, and since this area and this plan would be reviewed under the Pine Lands, I think it'd be appropriate to have a ordinance that's consistent with the Pine Lands regulations.
Is that, Mr. Solicitor, does that, that sounds like it meets our needs, does that meet our needs? Uh, Mike, the 65-foot depth by Pine Lands, where is that measured from?
I'd have to look into that specifically, you know, I didn't research this or look into that depth where it's measured.
But it seems like the property owner's working under the premise that the property is restricted to 35 feet. I have no idea what the average mean high water mark is, or whatever that reference point is. And I'm trying to understand how, what the difference is between that and the 65-foot Pine Lands regulation. And I don't know that council is in favor of doing that, I think it's a topic of discussion. But I don't think there's been any sentiment expressed by council. It becomes confused for me on the 15-foot seasonal high water mark, I don't, how can it have anything? That would kind of make it moot whether it's 35 feet, 65 feet, or 65,000 feet, if it's 15 feet from seasonal high water, would you agree, Mr. Fraley?
Yeah, I'd have to see the plans, I don't know the particulars of the pit. I'm just looking at this section as to where possibly this 35-foot measure.
I couldn't, I could not, I could not find that in the code at all, Mike, I just, we've looked and looked, and I can't find it. So I'm assuming that must be their computation, I don't know, I don't know that for sure.
Yeah, I don't know if there was some sort of, maybe a resolution of approval attached with the origination of this pit. It's outlined there.
This pit's been there for a long time, I think. My understanding is it predates Pine Lands, I think it does. I think it does.
I came into Estelle Manor in 1980, and I can assure you that there was a company that was there back then that was called Quill, and they were doing some extensive mining out of there, and they were there for quite a number of years before that. How long? I don't know. But I do know that Quill was the owner at the time when I first moved into Estelle Manor.
So how do we wrestle this bear? How do we get... I mean, is the onus on...